Okay, good afternoon, everybody. Good mor— is it still morning? Welcome to the Budget Advisory Board Joint Workshop with the City Commission of Fort Lauderdale this April 16, 2024. I want to thank the Budget Advisory Board for coming this morning. I appreciate your patience in getting started today. I know we have a fairly full agenda here, so— Mr. City Manager, I should just turn it over to the— well, let's take a roll call of the Commission and then a roll call of the Budget Advisory Board. Mr. Clerk.
Commissioner Herbst.
President.
Vice Mayor Glassman.
Here.
Commissioner Beasley-Pitman.
Here.
Commissioner Sternman.
Here.
Mayor Trentalas.
Here.
And for the Board.
Yes.
Chair Jeff Lowe.
Here.
Vice Chair William Brown.
President.
Melissa Milroy.
Here.
Ross Camerata.
Present.
John Rodstrom.
Not present.
Michael Marshall.
John Rodstrom.
Not present. Mildred Lowe.
Here.
Jeremiah Carter.
Here.
And Prabhu Ling Patel.
Okay, we have a quorum on the Board, correct?
Yes.
Very good. So, thank you all for being here today. So, I'd like to turn the table over to the Chair, Mr. Lowe.
Thank you, Mayor.
This is your first time appearing with the Commission as Chair, so congratulations.
Better. There you go. Okay, don't— okay, good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners. As most of you know, I've dealt with you frequently during these processes. My name is Jeff Lowe, and I currently serve as the Chairman of the Budget Advisory Board. My background includes being the CFO for a large local municipality. I also was the Treasurer for the City of Delray Beach, and also am a former Treasurer for the City of Fort Lauderdale. This experience has proved valuable in this budgeting process. I would also like each of my fellow Board members to introduce themselves—I know they were just on the roll call—and the district in which they were appointed. Bill.
You know, we can't hear you or see you, so can I ask you if you could please come up to the podium and make that introduction? One at a time, if you could all kind of come up?
Well, this is not my first time up.
No, no.
But— Bill Brown, Vice Chair, and appointed by Vice Mayor Glassman, District 2.
Hi, good afternoon. Melissa Milroy. I am a mayoral appointee.
Good afternoon. My name is Mildred Lowe, and I'm in District 3, appointed by Commissioner Pitman.
Any relation to Jeff?
Good afternoon. My name is Jeremiah Carter, District 3 Representative, appointed by Commissioner Beasley-Pitman.
Thank you, I appreciate it. We as volunteers—and that's what we are, our volunteers—spend a great deal of our time vetting the budget in great detail on each of your beheads, so that you're not spending endless hours of your time vetting through these numbers. We work at the City Manager's Office, the Budget Office, along with numerous Department Heads, on behalf of the taxpayers that we represent to align your Commission priorities with a responsible fiscal budget. Feedback from the Commission is essential in our success to guide our reviews and prioritize available funding. We, as a Board, are aware of the six Commission priorities set at your workshop, being public safety, homelessness, affordable housing, transportation and traffic, infrastructure and resilience, public spaces, and community initiatives. As we move forward, we need direction as to which are the most important priorities for you, and we need to consider them in that particular order. Last year, you told us that the two priorities were public safety and homelessness. We built the budget around that to meet your priorities, as well as fund some other projects that you all decided upon. We feel that there are several items that we need clear direction as we spend months reviewing the fiscal year '25 budget. Some of those include maintaining current rate fees, or do we increase them to make the city whole? An example of that are the fire assessment fees. Another example are special events, where we feel the special events should go out and find event sponsors and not spend city dollars. The milage rate. We as a Board feel that the current rate does not meet the current fiscal responsibilities of the city. Materials and labor costs are increasing, and we are being outpaced by those expenses. Another item is nonprofit funding. I have served on numerous nonprofits throughout the city. I received several calls over the years about the process in which we undertake this process. We previously attempted to open up the funding citywide a couple of years ago, and we received over 100 applicants. This proved cumbersome to both the Budget Advisory Board and to city staff. Last year, the Commission selected eight organizations of their liking and not funding the others. This process needs to be reviewed, and we need direction. We also support six organizations through sponsorship and service agreements from the city. The total of both of those last year was $2.5 million. This City Hall impact. Rental charges continue to escalate and have a large impact on the general fund. A decision needs to be made sooner than later on the future of the new City Hall to bring the Commission, staff, and residents together as one. Police headquarters continues to move forward along with increasing costs. We must fund those dollars to successfully move towards completion, and funds must come from other sources. I do want to thank the Commission for reviewing and unanimously approving a possible change to an ordinance relating to the delinquent utility bills. As of March 29, the total exceeded $7 million, or 29% of all utility receivables. This proposed change would increase utility revenue and assist with cash flows. We as a Board look forward to the Commission's direction in another challenging budget year. Thank you from all of us for the opportunity to serve in this capacity.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the Board want to add to Jeff's comments? Okay. Anyone from the Commission have any— Mr. Lowe, can you come back up? Anyone have any questions?
Laura.
Anyone— Laura, did you want to add to this presentation?
Sure. Take any comments, comments, concerns?
We noticed there are two exhibits. There's Exhibit 1 and Exhibit 2. Now, did you want to comment on any of these, or is this just for education purposes, for the Commission to know exactly what your agenda is in terms of your timeline and the types of work you're going to be engaged in?
It shows you the timeline and each— when the Department Heads make their wish lists and present to us, they're itemized there. And it was just for an information purpose, so you can see— because the next month, May, is our busiest month. We have a total of almost, I believe, Laura, correct me, five meetings, four or five at least. So, it's a really hectic time for us to come up with a budget that we can work with and we're given by the City Manager come June with their recommendations. So, really, it's mostly informational purposes.
Okay. All right. Does anyone have any questions, Mr. Lowe?
The only comment—and first of all, thank you so much, and thank you to the entire Board for all of your work. This is such an invaluable Board for us as we move forward with this process. So, today, was there anything in particular that you did want to get into? I noticed that you have a lot of meetings, as you just said, in May, and I see all of the different topics, and I see what you have discussed up to this point. But is there anything before your May meetings that you wanted us to get into today? Is there any direction that you wanted us to discuss? In other words, I'm looking for just some specificity in terms of what you wanted to accomplish at this particular joint meeting.
Well, I think one of the directives—and I have met with several of you individually—is dealing with the nonprofits. And how, you know, currently, when I do receive the calls, my response is, "Call your Commissioner." I really have no other guidance to give them at this point. There is not a formal application process in place. It is phone calls, the likes or the dislikes, and the mood of the Commission, who they do fund, if at all. You know, maybe the process— maybe we don't fund any and take that out. There may be some years we don't have any money to fund them, and that's the piece that would have to suffer to order to fund ongoing, you know, public safety, ongoing "let's finish the police station," different services that are utilized throughout the whole entire city.
So, let me ask you this. I didn't hear throughout any of your presentation a recommendation to cut services. In other words, it was all about cutting— it was all about raising taxes as opposed to trying to trim expenses. Has the Board had any conversations with regard to that?
We have. The money, as I said in my initial comments, has to come from somewhere. If our directive is to fund public safety, another fund's going to suffer, and we have to look for that. We only have so many dollars to try to accomplish all of your goals. I mean, all six are admirable. I mean, all six are admirable, all six are probably not reality, but, you know, we have, if we're going to rob Peter to pay Paul.
Well, the contracts, the, you know, the public safety contracts are already in place, so those are not negotiable. Those can't be trimmed. We're not looking for that. So, and then you mentioned the nonprofits, okay? That's, that's a, that's a budget item that is, that, you know, can be affected. Are there any other areas within the budget that you, that the Board is looking to consider, or is it you are to wait for the budgetary process throughout this, this next several weeks to make those determinations?
Well, currently, we will get the wish list from each of the Department Heads in the month of May. We will get direction as well as from the City Manager. I believe Laura and her team and the City Manager are currently in the process of having those meetings prior to them presenting to us. Once we get our marching orders from staff and what the actual dollars look like, we don't see the dollars on a daily basis. Laura's team does, Greg's team does. We'll know more about what we need to do, and we'll make those recommendations to the City Manager and to you at our next joint meeting.
Okay, because I, I don't know what percentage of the budget is discretionary. Obviously, if, if public safety, I believe, is what, 50, 55% of the budget, so we know that that's not discretionary. So, at some point, we'll probably hear from you as to what were discretionary expenditure items and where we would look to make adjustments. Greg, did you want to say something?
Well, that same question came about with the Budget Advisory Board. Same line of thought about what's discretionary, right? And beyond contracts, beyond public safety and staff that make sure that, that things happen, there's certain things that perhaps the Commission would want to consider, like what Mr. Low, Chair Low says is, I believe he said events, nonprofits.
Nonprofits.
And those are, there may be opportunities to, to use, you know, discretion on how you allocate those. The other thing too is, there's a point in time that we get a better understanding and forecast as to what potential the budget has, and that is in June. And so, it's important to already start thinking about what-if scenarios. So, what-if scenarios, what-if scenario that the values don't, are not achieved, right? So, then we have to scale down a considerable amount. But what if, what if we are in line? Then we have to cut down certain things, scale back on certain things. And, and then if the values come a little higher, as it has been in the past two years, but that is not something that we can expect. I mean, that's just an anomaly, that Fort Lauderdale keeps thriving, right, compared to other locations.
It's not an anomaly. It's something we all work hard to create, so.
It's a, well, when I say anomaly, in compare, compared to other parts of the nation.
Right.
Fort Lauderdale continues to thrive, and that's, again, your vision as a Commission, that you're putting programs, you're attracting people, all that creates a higher value. So, that's going to be certainly another touch point that you all will have, the BAB will have, to understand where we're at. But right now, I think what Chair Low is mentioning is that you, you as a Commission need to start thinking about the what-if scenarios, and what would you scale down should those values are not be achieved in June?
Okay.
Mayor.
Yes, Mayor.
My question, Chair Low, you had given us the list of those identified areas to public safety, homelessness. Was that in a particular order, or was that just given as a list of the things that we had identified during our meeting?
That's a list we as a Board were given from the City Manager's Office after your workshop.
Okay, all right, because I was trying to see if, if it was given at a rate of, I don't recall how we, I know how we came up with the listed items, but was it an overall consensus in us, like maybe four of us wanted all of this, two wanted this item, so I was trying to find out. But Laura's shaking her head no, so, okay.
Yeah, Vice Mayor, they were, I'm sorry, not no longer Vice Mayor. They were all just the top priorities.
Okay.
So, this year, you decided that those were your top priorities, and that's how it was voted upon. But last year, you, during this meeting, I believe it was, you further refined that for the Budget Advisory Board and said, you know, we're not looking to raise the milage rate this year, and we're looking to focus on, on public safety. If you had any direction like that, it really does help to focus the budget process. Understanding that all of the priorities are your top priorities, if there's any additional input, this is really the meeting where, you know, the Chair and our team too would like to get any of that input.
Okay, thank you for that, Clerk.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, Bill?
You want to comment?
Thank you. One question I think would be important and valuable for the Board and for the Commission is to get a clear direction as to the homeless initiative. One of the concerns, as has been expressed, is the unfunded mandate by the Governor signing of the bill. At what level of a contingency plan, if the city would have to be responsible for funding that, should we be working with staff to identify how much and to where those cuts within the budget are going to have to come from to address that, and to what level?
So, it's a very good point that you raise, and our City Attorney has begun conversations with the County Attorney to figure out what the County is going to be doing, and, and from that point, we'll know where there will be cost sharing, if at all. So, I do believe the statute, and correct me if I'm wrong, Tom.
Tom, are you over there?
Yeah. You're in the, there's no spotlight on you tonight. There, there is some interpretation of the statute saying that it's, it's something that the County has to resolve in terms of responding to the mandate that's been made by the state legislature. So, we're wanting to see how the County is going to respond to that mandate, and then see where, which cities, and, you know, we're not the only ones with homeless people. There's Pompano, there's Hollywood, there are places, you know, Water Hill. So, so when they conclude their first conversations, we'll then be able to have a better direction. But I do agree that we are going to definitely have to budget for some kind of assistance with the County in dealing with the, this new mandate, because it does require us to be proactive in ensuring that there, there's no encampment in public spaces. The one thing that I'm most concerned about is that if we don't have a plan in place and we don't follow through on that plan, that we will be subject to lawsuits by any individual, which will ultimately cause the city to bear the burden of paying attorney's fees. And we all know what the history of attorney's fees are with this city, and we don't want to suffer that again. So, we're going to wait till we hear back from Tom after he continues his conversations with the County. The County, I don't think the County Commission has really had, had any discourse on this either, so hopefully at some future meeting, we'll be able to get some direction from the County.
Okay, thank you, and hopefully we will possibly have heard something back by our next workshop in June.
Mayor, can I add?
Yeah, go ahead.
Just one thought to that too. So, you know, it's a best practice to fund ongoing operations with ongoing revenues. This is one of those instances where, given the fact that this is sort of a new initiative, and we really don't know when it's going to come, where it's going to come, how much it's going to cost, and to your point, I think it's going to take us a little bit of while working with the County to figure out our direction going forward. So, I would suggest that for planning purposes, for the BAB, that we don't factor that in. If this is something that we find we need to fund at a certain point, this is one of the times that going to fund balance for something like this, for the initial first year, whatever that startup cost may be, I think would be very, very appropriate. And then we build it into our budget on an ongoing basis if there are recurring costs. But I think, I, I would say, let's not, let's not be too focused on trying to anticipate something when we have no idea what that anticipatory expense, the extent of it, the order of magnitude or anything else is going to be. So, that would just be my thoughts on that, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right, there being none.
Are we going to share those areas that we want to focus on with the budget?
Yeah, please go ahead, sure.
I would like to ask that we definitely focus on how we can fund affordable housing in an additional way. There are some points that have been made with the Affordable Housing Advisory Board that we can discuss at a later time, but I would like to see us definitely address the affordable housing item to be part of our ongoing budget discussion, so we can include that out. I want that to stay a part of it.
You mean, find ways to contribute to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund?
Yes.
So that we have money available either for matching funds or for direct construction in order to continue with our efforts to provide more affordable housing in our city?
And also, not only that component, even seeing if there's any way we as a city, what we may be able to do financially to help do more to address that issue.
Okay, well, I, so, based on advice we would get from the Advisory Board, I'd like to, you're on that Advisory Board now, right?
I am.
Yeah. So, please bring back to us their, their recommendations, and then we'll be able to see if, if it's a budgetary aspect that, that the BAB needs to consider.
Most definitely.
Any other comments or questions? All right, there being none. Anyone else from the Board? Speak now or forever hold your peace.
I was also just thinking about the CRA funding, because it's been brought up at a few meetings, that I know the CRA is sunsetting, the Northwest CRA, so I think it would be helpful for us also to know your position and where you see that, because it is, you know, it's quite a bit of dollars that we're looking at for next year's budget, so.
So, interesting point, it's a double-edged sword. If we allow the CRA to lapse, then that additional funds come into the General Fund. And if we, if this Commission decides to extend the CRA, whether, with or without the County, that would provide a source of funding for affordable housing, as an example, that we could earmark towards just that line item. So, like I said, it's a double-edged sword. First of all, you're telling us where we can anticipate a budget shortfall, so we have to, we'll have to figure that out.
But, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to add to that. That's an interesting conversation that I think we're going to have to have in depth.
Yes.
But what the, what the County seems to be saying with regard to affordable housing is interesting. They're saying when the CRAs are sunsetting now, whatever leftover TIF money is available, they'd like to see us actually contribute for affordable housing. But that implies, I think, that the CRA sunsets and then that, those excess funds. But we have to, I, I've already asked and requested some really detailed information so we can see what we're talking about in terms of impacts on our budget, in terms of how we see the next fiscal year budget playing out. Where are we going to need funding, especially if we're saying, you know, milage rate is off the table? This is a serious conversation, but we need to see the numbers, we need to see what the impact really is by having the CRA continue or not continue. We also have to talk about, is it Invest Fort Lauderdale? We created another agency, didn't we? Was that Invest, who? City Manager, didn't we create an agency, I think it's called Invest Fort Lauderdale?
Yes. That would take over the CRA initiatives, wants the CRA sunsets, to make sure that projects get completed with whatever funding there is there.
So, we did already anticipate the sunset date, and, and that's why we did create Invest Fort Lauderdale. But this is a conversation we definitely have to have in depth, and, again, based on facts, based on numbers, based on finances, based on needs of next fiscal year, based on shortfalls, based on a lot of things. But we need to be educated. I, I don't want to just make a decision based on either, you know, emotion or thinking what could be, cannot be, what has been in the past. These have to be based on hard numbers, so I'm looking forward to receiving all of that from staff so that we can be educated about it. Thank you.
So, keep in mind, again, I'm not, I don't sit on the County Commission, so I don't know what decisions have been made, but from what I read in the newspaper, there's still debate at that level as to what they want to do with those CRA funds, because there are some Commissioners that want to just, instead of, instead of allocating it for affordable housing, they want to reduce their milage rate. So, I don't know if that has been solidified as to what they want to do. So, obviously, we'll monitor, we, we do want to focus on affordable housing. It's a, it's a real big issue in our city, and I think that it behooves us to find ways to, to fund those initiatives, if it, even if it includes just the CRA funds, so, which are significant.
Yes. And, and one thing, I'm sorry, Jeff, before you speak, just, Melissa, thank you for bringing that point up, because that is also definitely, as it has been said, those CRA funds and extension, the expansion of the life of the CRA is something I definitely want to discuss. And as it's been said, I'm bringing in the hard facts. You can sit down and make that educated decision on the way to go with that possibility of extending it. And just for the record, I am in support of extending the life of the CRA.
Okay. Greg?
Yeah, just wanted to mention that because there have been individual interest of you all, yesterday when we conducted Agenda Review, staff is preparing a presentation for the next conference to talk about the CRA, the current status, and also what options you all have, and to give us direction on what you would like us to fulfill.
And, and in that presentation, if you could have staff indicate what would be the financial contribution that would be available if we decided to, whether we decided not to continue with it or continue with it, what is the annual amount of income that's being derived through the TIF?
Absolutely, and Laura will be leading that conversation.
Okay, Laura. All right, anything else?
I just wanted to bring up, keep in mind, when you're looking at the CRA, it doesn't have to be 30 years anymore. It can be five years. It can be, you can fund it at half the amount. So, you have several moving parts going through that, and it will be a very lengthy informative discussion.
Okay. All right, very good.
Mayor, actually, I'll just chime in on that. So, thank you, Jeff, for pointing that out, because I think the idea when this first came up was about recognizing that we need to finish the projects, we need to finish our commitment to that neighborhood that's been neglected for so long. As, as those of you who have been around for a while know, we got off to a very slow start with the Northwest Progresso CRA. It, in fact, I even did an audit of it many years ago, at the request of the City Commission, looking at, at, at the progress that we were making and not making on that. And we've really accelerated in the last couple of years. We've hit the tipping point now, and we're seeing tremendous things going on along the corridor and throughout the entire district over there. And so, I think it's critical that we maintain this momentum. I mean, we are getting folks like Related looking at Sisdrunk. I mean, that is amazing. If you had told me when I got here 17 years ago that that was going to be the case, I would never have believed it. But we've done incredible things with the CRA, and I think it's, I think it's imperative that we continue this momentum, that we not lose track. To your point, Jeff, this isn't necessarily an extension of 30 more years, but I think we need to acknowledge that we have shortchanged that district for so long, and we need to honor the commitment we've made, recognize that the progress has been slow, but now we're there. And, you know, the biggest thing that we tried to do years ago was get publics interested, and we couldn't. And the reason we couldn't is because we didn't have the income, the demographics, to attract a major national supermarket to the area. But we're getting there. We're getting there. And, and I think it would be tragic to not fulfill the promises that we've made. So, it doesn't have to be all the money, it doesn't have to be for 30 years, but I do think, I do think we need as a community to stand up and say, we owe you, and we're going to follow through, and we're not going to, no neighborhood left behind. I think it's critical, so.
Okay. Anything further? There being none. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
This, this workshop's concluded. See you all at 1:30. See you all at 1:30.